With the Unsheltered, I was part of the Coalition to End Homelessness in the state of Arizona in Yuma County. I was very shocked when I came here. I immediately looked at where I could volunteer and such to help with the unsheltered. And so I'm at Runner's Refuge. And Mayor, thank you very much for the backpacks and such. But poverty and homelessness don't end. They continue. People without an address cannot get a job. I feel that our community has so many different churches that are reaching out. Runner's Refuge works all on volunteer. We didn't spend $2,000 like you did on your backpack. We don't know how much money is spent because we all are donating things with our heart and with our mind and with our time as well as several donations from the community, which we greatly appreciate. When I was in Yuma with the Coalition to End Homelessness, what we did was once a month, all the organizations that worked together met with the city mayor to decide what is in the best interest for our community. And Mayor, I'm asking you if you would be willing to help organize. We have Mountain View Church open for our homeless tonight and the next two nights so they don't freeze in the cold. We have other organizations that are willing to donate food to the homeless and such. I'm asking you, Mayor, if you could please organize those groups to come together in the best interest for our community. Once a month, I'm asking you, Mayor, can we do that?
I'm a little confused about it. I'm sorry, I'm not quite sure. What would that look like? What do I understand?
So what it would look like is a team from behavioral health, a team of all the different churches. We can set an agenda for an hour, once a month. What do we want to achieve? If we want to achieve decreasing the amount of homeless in front of Walmart, how are we going to work together to do that? What, I know that you have some ideas about the homeless that may not jive with everyone else in the communities, but it is a problem. We feed 50 to 180 people a day when we have food at the Runner's Refuge. It is a problem in this community and it's not going to be solved by every little entity working alone. We need your help and we need to work together. So an agenda for an hour. I'm willing to work with you to see, and I'm willing to do the phone calls and the legwork, but we need you as our representative for the city to help us.
Okay. So I believe that we already have something like that. I could be wrong.
If you're not part of it and you don't know about it, then we don't have it.
Well, okay.
Oh, yeah.
All right. So let me, let me just say this again. I do help the homeless.
I know.
Okay, but hold on, hold on, let me finish, okay? I am trying to organize things like this. I understand what you're asking, but I have to separate my political position from my personal professional position, okay? So as a mayor, I don't know that that can happen. However, however, as a private individual or somebody that runs a nonprofit, okay, and I do, I said that earlier. I think, I think for me, my issue is that we're, you're asking me this as if I'm not already doing it. And I'm well aware of what is going on. I'm very, I work with Runner's Refuge, I'm well aware of what's going on over there. I know what's going on at Mountain View Church. I pretty much know what's going on in all the churches because I do work with all the churches. Getting them together, we have things like the Ministry Alliance and other places. So, so things are happening. If you're asking me as the mayor to organize that, I'm not sure that, that that is necessarily within my purview. But as a private individual, I have no problem doing something like that. However, however, what I will say is any one of us can do that. And so, so as a, as a private person, any, right? Any one of us can do that.
She makes between $45,000 and like $55,000 a year.
Ma'am, ma'am, we have asked for quarter pots to be put in certain locations so that people don't have to defecate in parking lots, and you have said no.
No, I didn't. Whoa.
But yeah, you were supposed to say.
I am, I'm sorry.
As a, as a former teacher, I will tell you, I read the room, and while this lady was talking about her assault, you were on your phone. While the gentleman was talking about his grandson, you were on your phone. It's not appropriate.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was communicating with our city manager. I apologize for that.
Don't delete those, those are public records.
My problems, so to speak. I was communicating with our city manager, so I apologize for that. I don't know anything about the quarter body. I'm sorry, I don't know. I don't know, nobody has ever asked me that. So I, I don't know what you're talking about. But I can tell you, I can tell you, Governor, I can tell you that we are bound by some laws. We have an anti-donation law in the state of New Mexico. Can you please verify that we actually have an anti-donation law?
You're going to be so mad at me. Don't, don't do it. Because I need you.
Well.
I need you. We are probably not fully agree on interpretation by, uh, and I can do this in San Antonio because I'm a lawyer. If one more lawyer in public work in the state of New Mexico tells me that I can't give you back your hard-earned money to do the work in your communities, I'm going to lose my mind. And I, let me just ask myself, what happens to me if you tell me that you're not a person, that you're a politician, that you're not a nation class? Anyone? They don't want to tell you because it's not pleasant maybe. However, every lawyer tells every elected leader they can. I will tell unequivocally. And I also want to take some responsibility away from, I hope you can hear the way, from the local leaders here who I greatly admire and respect, even though we know what is the public opinion. That's true everywhere, and that's right. I, I like New Mexico a lot because we can be, we can disagree. We're not so disagreeable. Now, country around the world has gotten really angry. And I want to thank everyone tonight. You stayed late, you didn't get angry, or, or passionate. You're sharing personal stories and a heart. And you have high expectations of every public official. Can't argue with that. I am now creating a more centralized response to people who are homeless, largely because every community is doing it differently. There's a lot of frustration. And what I've learned by spending time doing the work I've heard of, doing it directly as a county secretary, responding directly as a governor, visiting literally hundreds of programs, funding them here with very little outcomes. And I would also suggest this, and I'll bet it's true here too, and it's not by design, just it's happening to us. The likelihood that each group, each church serves the same 50 people over and over again is really high. And so, to your point, that's what's, well, that's what you're making a great kind of difference. So I am working to centralize all of it. That means the state will not provide resources. Because we're clear that this intake process is happening in this way, that we're all sharing data about outcomes, how we're serving, accountability, investment, support, dignity, job training, all of it. You're not going to get money from me. You have to wait two years for the next one to get it to you. And I'm doing it in every community. Red communities, blue communities, communities with no borders, tribal communities, everyone. I would like to introduce her, and there she is. This is Taylor, take a scan. She's at Brand New Hire. She's helping to centralize centralization of this work. Not alone, we want a housing office. Housing is crucial. Daniel Warewalt is out with a microphone straight back there. He's waving his hand. We're going to fill the 30 floor plus two. So here's what I can do. Because I'm eclipsing some of the local independents here, not in what you identify as a priority now where you spend your money. Because I'm not the boss of you. All right? You're not the boss of me. We independently respect each other and do our work. But I have the lion's share of money. I also have the lion's share of 20,000 people working, more than any community. I will invite the mayor and others to come to your meeting. Taylor will be here. I'll come to the first one. I'll get it organized and it'll happen during the session so we don't have all makers here reading them where they are. Let's start that process. I respect that the mayor, you don't have to agree with my interpretation, but we want people who say I might have a conflict. That's pretty valuable in someone who's elected. So thank you for sharing that. You didn't have to do that. I will treat that conflict the way that you described it. I'll remove it by applying you as a lawyer. And we'll do, we'll do this work. And then the last thing, young lady. How about if you keep your special ed license, come, come to work for the state of New Mexico and let me pay you to get into the classroom, part-time, full-time, anytime, anywhere? Please, I beg you, we need you, and if you're interested.
But I, I miss, you can ask me how to, I miss the classroom so much, but I get tired because we can never dismarry.
All right, but you could be an opportunity for special education. I'm going to find you.
It doesn't pay.
All right, well, I'm very sorry about that. The point I was making at your expense. I didn't mean to, I didn't mind to tease you.
I will be back.
Everyone in this community is going to have to step up in every context possible. Everyone in the state. We must be safer. We must be fairer. We must be more transparent. We must be more accountable. We have to have a lot more respect for one another. We can lead by example. I hear you. There are a lot of things the state can do better. Expect us to work harder to meet those ends. There's a lot of things that local communities can do better. And that's state law. It's not here, it's here. Right, we're going to work hard. They don't have to be here, thank you. And I'll, I'll help initiate that. And I need everything you know about running good programs that there are not really benefits for that.
Okay, but I'm going to clear the air, okay? Your comment about quarter bodies, I have no clue what you're talking about. And I can assure you that every email, every text I have is public information. And I'm 1,000% confident there is nothing that you will find that says that that was a request and then I said no. I'm 1,000% confident. The other thing I want to be clear about is I don't have any more power than my other six commissioners. I absolutely do not. It's an incredibly important, I'm very commission manager for a government. I am one of seven votes. So no, I do not get to decide things on my own. I get in a lot of trouble if I do that.
And I just whine until I give you your lay.
I'm not trying to pass above. I'm simply telling you that I do not have the power like, let's say, a city like Albuquerque would. Like a mayor of a city like Albuquerque would. That's not how we operate here. Finally, I'm going to make this as clear as possible. I have incredible compassion for people that are homeless and people that are in-house, whoever, and people with mental health disorders. I've certainly experienced that in my own family. I have personally been homeless.
If you pull up the issue set on the record, that would prove otherwise.
So I am not without compassion. I think that my difference is that it's the way we help them, okay? And I, I believe that everybody deserves a shot and everybody deserves an opportunity. I actually wrote a program. And I was just telling somebody today, the reason I got involved in politics to begin with is because I wrote a transitional living program and presented it to the city many years ago and asked them for a building publicly. They told me they would give it to me. They went behind closed doors and they turned me down. So I do know what it's like. I do. So please don't think I don't have compassion because that's just simply not true. And I will defend that. I've been doing this for 16 years and, you know, I can be doing a whole lot of other things. Trust me, I don't.
You shouldn't be.
I have sacrificed a lot and, and trust me, there are people on social media right now that'll say, oh, she's making it all about her. No, I'm not. I'm using it as, as to demonstrate that I do care. And I would take issue with anybody that says that I don't. And just because I view it from a different angle, because I have a different philosophy on how to help, doesn't mean that I don't care. And so I want to make that perfectly clear. But I do believe that everybody deserves an opportunity to succeed. I absolutely believe that. I, my fate tells me that everybody is created with unlimited potential. They're created with intrinsic self-worth, and I truly, truly believe that. But I don't believe that the answer is to do for somebody. I believe the answer is to do with somebody. I believe the answer is to teach people that they are capable. Because the reason we have a homeless problem in a lot of places, the reason we have these issues is because people don't believe in themselves. And let me tell you something. If you've stayed on the streets long enough, if you've been without a home long enough, if you've been without your own stuff long enough, you do start to believe that you're not capable, that you're not evil. Of course you believe that. Who wouldn't believe that? But shouldn't we as a community, instead of just letting people just sit there and we bring them sandwiches, we bring them blankets, we bring them whatever, shouldn't we, shouldn't we be saying to them, you know what? Come on, I'm going to help you. And I'm sorry, listen, we can agree to disagree. That's okay, that's okay. I still like you. You're our, you're in special education. My daughter has a master's degree in special education. She worked with kids with behavior issues and still does, and still does. She's done it for many years. So it's okay, we don't have to agree on everything. But just as you believe, what you believe. Just because I'm, just because, just because I'm the mayor doesn't mean I don't have a right to believe what I believe. And so I always say this, I say this all the time. You get two people in a room, you get two people in a room. One person believes one thing, one person believes another. Who is right? I guess it really just depends on what you believe, right? It really does. And, and we can agree to disagree on this, but, and, you know, maybe I'm getting a little defensive, but I do take issue with suggesting that I don't want to help people. Of course I want to help people, of course I do. My philosophy on how to help them may be different, but I absolutely want to help people. I deserve, I think everybody deserves a chance to succeed.
I think we're going to go back here, circle back.
Hello, my name is Gilbert Garcia. I'm a public safety telecommunicator. I have been since 2008. Let's see, I'm currently a quality assuring specialist. A little bit more background, I was a reserve deputy here for almost 10 years. I worked for a lot of great departments. I worked for APD. My current department, State Police, is a really good department. They really do advocate for us and appreciate us as employees and public safety telecommunicators. But one thing they don't really have control of is retirement. So in 2021, there was a state bill 403 that was introduced to recognize public safety telecommunicators as first responders and fall under the police retirement. A similar bill was passed in Idaho in 2022. And recently, there's been a national movement for NINA APCO 901 Association to nationally recognize public safety telecommunicators or emergency dispatchers as first responders to fall under that retirement. My question to you all is, is there any upcoming legislation or anything to pick up this bill and advocate for our emergency, our emergency dispatches across the state to fall under the police retirement?
Yes, and then a bit of, I don't know, remind me, and my guys can do that too, who is the key sponsor? I just don't remember.
Oh, I just looked it up.
Well, we'll figure it out. We're probably, and I should learn that the gentleman to my right or left is in real time taking notes, making sure I can follow up, that I can meet every commitment and that I get information because sometimes I don't know the answer. So it, it's very effective and helpful. And I don't always have all the answers. I have to look. So you might be aware, we've really worked at investing in more retirement. Done a ton in terms of pay, pay equity. We want to do more. This will make some of the local jurisdictions a little cranky, but our last big raise is about 20% for the state police. And I'd like to do another one. You've got about 126 million available. This community's asked for money. We've given it. You should ask for more. It's a little bit of money that's not being spent. That sounds like I'm mad at them. It's also hard to recruit officers and to retrain them and to get, retain them and to get them here. We, I believe that the dispatch aspect is critical to the overall effort in policing. I'm going to speak about it from two perspectives and then I'll be done quick. They weren't included in the initial retirement for a bunch of reasons, not the least of which is a sense that the stresses aren't the same. I don't agree. And that we don't want early retirement, what they recall. That's also an incorrect statement about early retirements. They have enough dispatch workers. The state sentiment about that is we need to be as smart about lifting up everyone who's working in public safety. And so I don't remember who that, who sponsored it. They're getting, is it anyone? All right. So it is David Guayanos, and I'm going to reach out to him and see what I'm going to guess. He's probably going to re-interviews. I will say this, I can't help it, the bragging is disgusting. You know, our pension was underwater in 2019. And most states' public pensions are still underwater. We're likely to have to do a couple of other small things, but guess what? New Mexico's public pensions are not underwater. And when they are, they, so we fixed it, did those investments. We've also right-sized the retirements and reinvested in police retirements. So I need to look at this. I will call that legislator. You should too. And let's figure out where we are. I don't really know what their strategies are. I can do a little more work in that arena. And I am concerned that we don't have enough staff where we need them. And these calls are incredibly stressful and require incredible training. And I know that your officers and team members know that and appreciate that, which is another reason we brought a sort of presumptive causation about stress-related illnesses on the job. So thank you for reminding me not to forget about that and to take a little closer look. That was very helpful. Thank you. I'm sorry I didn't know who ladies, but thank you for letting me look it up. You're welcome. Thank you for your service.
Hi, my name is Gabriela Munoz, and I am a domestic violence survivor. What I'm here about is about the gun issue. The fact that he had, he's a repeated offender over and over, and he's been dismissed, he's been, you know, without, um, let's go. Without, I forgot the word. Anyway, without prejudice, I'm sorry, without prejudice. So he just released the same stuff over and over. And it took, I mean, I almost died three times with him. His weapons were supposed to be turned in within three days of the restraining order signed by Ms. the Honorable Judge, the Honorable Judge Schneider Fuchusle. But she protected me for four years because that's how serious the situation was. And what I realized, I went in February to do the restraining order in 2021. And then in 20, they were supposed to, he was supposed to have returned the receipt of the weapons within three days. It was never taken care of. I, you know, I thought they were going to do this or whatever. And he ended up in Utown, out of the state. In Arizona, he committed a crime against police officers and shot at them. And so I don't know what happened there. They sent him back, so he did it again here with me. And so my thing is, I'm, what I'm concerned about is where is the connection between an order being stipulated specifically for these guns to be turned in? And when I went, I was told that they weren't going to do it. That it wasn't their business to do that. The Department of Safety, right? And not the police station, but, you know, they, they said that to me. And I said, well, he was supposed to have, I'm thinking I'm safe, yet he's running around rampant. Obviously, he did this, committed this crime there. And yet he comes here and I'm still threatened by him. And, you know, I did my best to stay okay. But what I'm asking is, why is it okay for them to, or for, why? It took him a year, actually. I had to go back in and I looked through my paper. And I did my work and researched on this so I could come with facts. And so when that happened, I'm sitting going, they said, well, what do you mean they haven't taken care of this? The lady upstairs at the courthouse. And I said, they haven't. So I thought that I knew reforms. And so we did all that and they were surprised that they were not, he was injected or he wasn't even, the guns weren't even turned in. So I lived in fear for a long time. And what I'm, and he was even acquitted from our trial. I don't know how that happened. But it was hard. And what I'm asking is just the gun part of women, you know, who are not being protected, who are not being listened to, called liars. Lawyers, defense lawyers always turn against us. And I was revictimised and it was a scary situation. I felt horrible. It was still scary to even go up there and, you know, speak your mind and speak your truth. And so it really bothered me and I realized a lot of women that I go to group with for PTSD and stuff, they told me, they told me that, you know, anyway, when these women are talking about their personal stories and experiences, and it makes me feel so angry that people don't believe us. Nobody wants to report these things for a reason. We're not, we're not being taken serious, most of us. And a lot of women won't even show up to their court dates and they get arrested. And it's, to me, it's like, how does that happen? And why is there no more protection for us? I mean, we live in fear when this happens. And right now, I think Congress is in prison, for real. And so I live with that. And I'm trying to work with COPE to help other women through this because it's a, it's an experience I'll never forget. You know, three times he tried to kill me, he didn't succeed. And thank God, because I'm here for a reason. And I'm here to speak for them. I'm here to defend someone they couldn't have defended me. And when the police and, you know, when this stuff happened, I'm just like, why aren't they doing the part when they're supposed to stipulate on the restraining order? It's clear as day. And I had to go battle for myself. And I, you know, it's just what it is. But the women, the guns, it's just, they're so, I mean, especially with repeated offenders. She's a repeated offender, obviously. And I'm just worried about why is that happening? Why is it okay for us to have to, you know, try to survive these situations? And it's just, I want to understand the reason for that. The guns is just, it was a scary time for my, in my life. And I just want to know that. And I'm sure I forgot a lot of things I had to say because I'm kind of nervous. But that's the main issue to me is the accountability about, you know, the receipts, the procedures to have this stuff turned in and the warrant to not be served or something. And it's like, I had to fight a lot. And I don't mind, now I'm okay. But I, that's what I want to know, just the accountability between people not wanting to do their job because it's not important or they push you aside or, you know, you're, deal with it when you go to court. You're a person, whatever. As a victim, I felt revictimised over and over. And I just live with that and I just, that's all I want to know. I'm sure for that. But thank you for listening.
You're welcome. And thank you for sharing your personal story. Yeah, but I mean, these stories are really hard to say. The people really are crazy. This might separate me from some of the, you know, I'm glad to, I do have gratitude for all of our first responders. New Mexico has a terrible, I'm repeating that, terrible accountability issue with all the laws that we passed that require our protection, particularly here for.
That shows in the Otero County Sheriff's Department.
And our Secretary DPS would like to. And our Secretary of DPS would like to say things, but these extreme risk protection laws, judicial orders, warrants for felons, firearms, and other risks, they don't get executed. I actually funded to do fugitive war on behalf. I mean, I'm spending well more than a billion and a half to support the efforts to make sure that the issues that you're identifying are fairly and adequately addressed. Two years ago, independent reviews said New Mexico's got really good laws on the books that should in fact result in fewer suicides, fewer domestic violence recurrences, fewer felonies with firearms. But in fact, and this is not the report that I've been, most of the jurisdictions in New Mexico do not follow or execute those laws. So this is an area of very, very concerned about, and required in the budget. Local enforcement report to us to be listened to. And they should expect, even if they don't agree with me, I gotta fight a lot harder to require that you follow the law with the real circumstances when you fail to do so at all junctions of the judicial system. So I'd like to disagree with your interpretation. I really do. But in fact, I have rules, and it's relevant everywhere in the state of New Mexico. And I have no explanation, although remember, we don't have to, we don't have to let it crawl. But I can start to change the requirements in state law. I have every intention of winning that in this legislative session. But I'm very frustrated by it. Secretary?
Thank you, Governor, and thank you for sharing that with us. First of all, from a law enforcement perspective, I just want to offer, I guess my colleagues, I definitely feel like the failures in our community, they feel like not getting the service that they needed and required. And I was being sincere. I want to give my opinion for a few reasons. And so personally, I think what we found when the extreme risk protection order was built, written into law, a law enforcement, it was difficult to follow. It was difficult to execute. I think it was well-tended, the law in itself, but it was difficult to go through the steps that would lead to a place where a person acted voluntarily turning into their firearms. A lot of times, when we deal with domestic violence, it's almost easier to file a restraining order against a person, keep the person away from the victim than it was to go through an extreme risk protection order petition. And so we recognize that within the constraints, that the way that the law was written, we need to turn our own responsibility, and it's part of our responsibility. And so when we started looking, we looked at the law, and we had a task force that was formed in order to assess where the default were and why we had difficulty with the enforcement side of this. And so I think we'll find on our DPS website and identify with the location of the law where it improves our deal. But working within the framework we currently have, we also can fail in this space. And so what we decided to do, the national enforcement academy, is to not only train, and DPS not only train our municipal state police officers, which are our original and our, but also to extend that training across the municipal law enforcement. And so we've been successful in offering that training and having a tremendous amount of interest. Also, we've been able to use these insurance departments and programs to learn about the law, and we've lent it now to actually use it as a tool for law enforcement. We've seen some positive success in that. We mentioned specific communities today, and there was one community in particular that had been criticized for not using ERBO law or petition. They won't take their case. And after some of the training, they now have it, and they have seen some success in that regard. So that's part of our responsibility as well, is to take the laws as their structure and to make sure that they're trained and run. We're trying to do our best. And we're going to continue that training here in 2025. And so I think we talked a little bit in this town law about accountability for the whole. We've been working very hard overall to increase the professionals in law enforcement and to make sure that we have a constant, regular training. Continue administration in 2021, one of the first things we're asking is, is some of the ideas and what can you do to raise the professionals in law enforcement? If you go back to that timeframe, 2021, 2020, I don't know if everybody remembers, the national movement against law enforcement and what the protection was of law enforcement. So we've been very hard at DPS to raise the professionals in law enforcement. We've been offering free to the entire state of Michigan training, and that's the gap. Not only the awareness that they're training, they're professionals. And so we've offered escalation training. We've offered training. I mentioned we've offered training for free. Oh, I think I'm going to say the free, it's free to them, it's not free to the state. It's costing somebody so many, the authorities are gracious enough to fund DPS, you know, for that initiative. And so, of course, I mentioned training, the state police as an example. We have, we have a basic representative level of training, and we have an advanced level. And we've trained the entire municipal state police in the advanced level. Of course, I mentioned training, beyond legitimate levels of training. At basic policing, municipal police has also participated in Torres Strait Act and bystander, the law enforcement program, getting training. So we're working very hard to make sure that all the training will be out. And so specific to your point, we recognize that a lot of the laws is just that, unless law enforcement are out there and dealing with, working, dealing with law enforcement, fresh out of the academy, those are able to, if they don't find it, it's going to be another law. And so we will be very hard to get the message out. We try to announce this, where we're failing, where we can do better. Thank you for your presentation.
I might also let you know that it's likely that strength in that law did not pass the legislature last year. I support that. I supported it on the front end to get it passed in the first place. I will support it again, but it's tough to get through the judiciary committee. So I would advocate that for members of the community that want that done, let your legislature know you don't agree, you have the same rights as everyone else. Let that be known to your policymaker. Just so you know where I am, I support that. And I might be a little tougher than my secretary about accountability, where the law says you will and you don't. But there's people on sick, and so thank you for your current point. He's doing a really good job, let's say, on the training and the re-intervention of what the standards want to be. And, I mean, no disrespect to any of you, but sort of the professionalism that all of us need to share, and we're doing that now as a state, including local enforcement to get the right training and certification. No one's fighting about that. Everyone's gone and said, hey, including tribal police. So thank you, and I think the community just deserves to know this is an area where we've been better working together than not. But ERBO needs some work, and the enforcement here needs some capital.
Good evening. I'm, I can't speak now. I've been waiting so long, and so many things have gotten over my head. But anyway, I thank you, Governor, for being here this evening. I am, I moved to New Mexico the end of August. I started my journey back to New Mexico. I, I went to school here 50 years ago. I was a young bride of an Air Force soldier, and I walked up to the campus, and they let me in, and I got my education. I got my first AA in police science on this campus. So I love Alamo Gordo, but I ended up 40 minutes outside Silver City. And in that, my dream came true. I wanted a healing center in which I could bring in formerly incarcerated women and give them healing, not the healing that happens at halfway houses and all that, but a different healing. I'm a shaman, and I want to have shaman healing. I have created a plan, a three-month plan, of which we can take incarcerated women, bring them to the retreat, to the center, to the healing center. And it's based off the Hawaiian model, the refuge city, in which they brought them in, people had broken the moral code, and provided them the healing that they needed, and they started with their bodies. And I'm in the Memrose Valley, where we have farmers who can provide us food, healthy food, to heal their bodies. Prison food is not healthy. There's meat that goes in there that's stamped "not for human consumption." They take them off the trucks. That's the food that's being given to people in prisons here in New Mexico.
They do have to follow laws.
I've been on my healing center for three, four months now. It's open, ready to run, but another miracle happened in my life. And that's another center that's right across the way from me. We're in a isolated, it'll be a 45 acres. The cabins are built, the residents are built. They've been vacant for four years. And I'm asking you, Governor, with your heart, and you're listening, and I know you, and the work that you do, I know you can bring restorative justice to New Mexico. You could be the leader, because I know what this desert does for healing. I have healed so much about what I have gone through. To get me here, being on the desert, being with the people who still hold values and principles that are unimaginable to me. I've lived in Washington State all of my life, but I came here because I believe New Mexico will bring us back to where we are as a country through restorative justice. We have made a system that is oppressive. We have created a society that is oppressive. For a country that touts freedom, we incarcerate more people than any other place in the world. How is that freedom?
This may make you feel a tad better. That's accurate. Totally true. The wealthiest country in the world, many number of conventions and systems and efforts. We have the lowest, the highest bag, the worst rate, less than 70% of Americans are murdered. We have a terrible justice set of circumstances to be overcome. We should know in New Mexico, incarcerations are way down. Frankly, there's fewer people than a decade ago in jail. Now I might worry about that stat a little, given, I'm not sure we're doing a really serious criminal side and that crime on the other side. And I thought you should know that, because that's an important thing that Mexico values. And I don't think people readily believe, but in fact, it's true. And so I just, like, you're a fact about the national issue, and that are not where we all need for restorative justice. I agree. I just want to know. Well, I need to know. That's a, that's a fact.
Well, Governor, I have a gift for you. The gift is a plan of how just a little piece of trinity of liberation's contribution to restorative justice, and I want you to fully consider.
Young lady is a lovely young lady. You called me a young lady. Food is, is used to, who didn't do that. But often gets criticized, being the Secretary of Corrections is not one of the faint of heart. We don't serve anything that's not for human consumption. So if we've done that somewhere, she should know about it. It should be very bad. And if she doesn't, I would do. Do. The food in corrections is not what I expect. She knows that. I would tell you it's likely better that it is in most of your public schools. I don't like that at all. And I'm trying to fix that at the same time. She'd be glad to hear your suggestions, what you need. As your constructive criticism about what she hasn't done, that's her job, my job. She's going to come right over there, and I'm joyful that you have a plan for us to look. Thank you, Secretary.
Thank you, Governor, because that's one of the things I wanted, was your Secretary of Corrections to take a look at this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Secretary.
First of all, I want to recognize the guys who've been allowing us to speak for our governor all night. So thank you, guys, for holding mics for us. Governor Loing Grisham, I'm glad to see you here in my hometown. It's, it's important to me because I liked what you said about how you feel like you grew up in Alamo Gordo, because I did grow up in Alamo Gordo. And I, I think it's great. Anytime someone feels like this is their hometown, that's a good thing, because I expect you to treat it like it's my hometown. Now, I'll save my name for the end, because I'm less important than what I'm about to talk about. All right, so I said my hometown earlier, because it is my hometown. It's also your town. But there's a piece of this town that is solely and only yours. That is your home and your property. That belongs to no one else but you. That said, I'm going to go ahead and say, we need to stand your ground law in New Mexico. The current statute 30-2-7 requires us to retreat inside of our homes in the event of a trespasser, if we feel unsafe, someone's trespassing on our property. We are required to retreat inside our home. We must feel like we are in danger of being bodily harmed or in danger of death. And I don't think it should have to come to that ever. We should be able to physically remove somebody from our property when they are refusing to do so. We should be able to remove a person who is threatening to us. We shouldn't have to feel to the point where I feel like I'm going to die or I'm going to be hurt. If I can physically remove someone from my property without fear of reprisal from some statute that says I can't do that, I should be able to do that. If I can remove somebody before it gets to the point where either of us feel like we're in danger, then it's done. We don't have to go that far. If I can remove somebody, we're done. Now, the next piece of this is that I want you to hear me. I'm not talking about guns. I'm not saying that we should be able to shoot anybody who comes onto our property on that first footstep. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying if a guy I have told to leave is not leaving, he's going to be in my hands until he's over that line, the property line. We should be allowed to do that without calling the police, without relying on a sheriff's office that will only refer this to the DA's office, who, I'm sorry, are not as aggressive as we have just been told, especially the ADAs. They refuse to prosecute instances of where this has happened, or they'll outright deny it. So that said, I'm not talking about guns. We need to be able to remove people ourselves. This is an issue that we all should be allowed to defend our properties, not have to retreat inside our homes. Some of us might not be able to make it inside of our homes before something bad happens. Now, if there's a way that we can agree that this is a good law for New Mexico, then we should take it. I want you to understand, I don't see this as an aggressive stance. With nearly two decades in the Army, I fully understand escalation of force. Not everybody might, but it's pretty common sense if you think about it. Even as a special operation soldier, I couldn't just go around shooting whoever I wanted, though they may deserve it. But that is, that is not what you're allowed to do. You see a situation for what it is reasonably, and you escalate the situation as you need to. We must be allowed to do that, especially in our own home, in our front yard. My name is Corey Schmidt. Thank you for your time.
Corey, thank you for staying in New York, your lovely hometown. I spent my life at the old Holiday Inn. I didn't have a house. I was there, like I said, every weekend, so not the same as your experience. I split my time between San Diego, it's beautiful. I was around for the old space museum, so many other important things, and I love it. I was around for the old space museum, so many other important things that I love really can be described from hometown. And we were a lot of appreciation for your community. I don't know that you and I would agree about that law, but it doesn't matter. It don't need me, except at the end, you're pastors. I will do more homework until I agree to do for everyone here. Everybody's opinion is relevant and important enough for me to take the life. I will tell you this, and I think it would be really heavy to do it in the context of the current law, which for a variety of reasons, not picking on that, but I don't know that we would have much luck. But I want you to know that because you have every right to advocate those positions to have sponsors. This is the, this is the legislative session, the whole chapter, and I have said to this legislature, vote hard. And my expectation is that they single out a body of laws and efforts that they are going to debate in the local community and improve public safety in statewide in a number of areas. So this is the right session, way down the hall to raise it. It's the first time it's been raised to me, I think, excuse me, anywhere in the state. Otherwise, I might have a more in-depth response. So let me take a look in the thank you. And I will have that raised. I've got lots of folks that have very independent views about what could work better, well, and thank you. The first time it's been raised, I think it sounds like a no. I believe that is, no one's ever talked about it.
Man, you miss every shot, you don't take, and I think it's worthwhile then.
All right, well, again, I, I introduce a ton of stuff, never even get to here. Now, that sounds like I'm mad, I'm not, or complaining, I'm not. I'm well out. And I respect the legislature and I've got a lot of good, solid relationships. Frankly, if I'm getting everything I want, I'm not asking for enough or I'm not dealing with the hard issues in either of them, they should be debating any number of things. I just say that to you not to discourage you or I even do my homework. I'm not sure how I feel about it.
I'm not discouraged, ma'am.
Good. Did you sound like you were? I want to make sure I reiterated that to the broader community. And I don't know, I feel like I'm discouraging people from doing what you have, everyone to do. Thank you for being here tonight. It's nice to meet you.
Good evening. I have a lot of respect for you, Governor, and the rest of your board and all the public officials. My name is Pastor Don Hoffman. I have a terrible welcome home men's recovery. I've had it for seventeen years. I don't advertise it. I just let God do the works. I did have it approved by the state of New Mexico, probation and parole. But then men call me that are getting out of prison or been in a intermediary six months and they call me and they say, "Well, your program's not on the list." And I'm like, "Well..." But then when I spoke to Lita Gonzalez, who approved it, she says, "Well, just have them call me." And I said, "Well, why can't we be on the list after seventeen years?" And we have a, you know, great high rate of non-recidivism. And then plus, we, with the men, we do volunteer work. We went up to Riedoso, we cut burnt trees down. We haul them down, we cut them up. I had the guys working. We have about fourteen cords of firewood. And we sell it cheaper and I give it away to the people that don't have money. We have a third of an acre. We have a hydro aquatics growing system. So it teaches the men. And I'm a general, I was, I retired this year, a general contractor actually last year for thirty-seven years and build a lot of nursing homes, care facilities. So I need help getting that list out so that I can be of assistance to those men that...
I think you're right. We're going to take care of that right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I have one last thing.
Yes, sir. I can make it. It's not like I can't do anything else, just.
Okay.
When I have the power to fix it, why wouldn't I? So let's just do that.
Uh, Chief of Police, I need your help because when we have men that come, there sometimes the sheriff's department stands up, "Could you house them?" Or there's somebody that's out on the streets and "I have an extra bed, will come on in." But if they're drinking and they're disorderly, and then when I call nine-one-one and they show up, they say, "Oh, Pastor, we can't do anything." You have to file a three-day notice before we can get them onto your property. Or if they're fighting or they're punching holes in the building of the church, what I, you know, I need your help on that. Because when I talked to Pastor Torres this afternoon, he says, "Oh, that never happens at, at Mountain View." And I said, "Well, maybe I'll just bring it up and let's get this resolved." Can we do that?
Sure. I think, I think we can have some further dialogue. I don't have enough facts to determine the property determination, but case by case or we can sit down and talk and talk about the facts and see if our officers are doing the right thing or if they're needing more training in, in that area.
So I'm meeting with LULAC tomorrow and they need places for people, the homeless to come to. And I said, "I'd be willing to give them a place, feed them, but I just have a problem with once they're in the building..." Then they're my asset and, and whether, if they're being destructive, I need your to help.
Sure. I understand your concern and your frustration that if they're damaging or making harms within your facility, that if you call us, you expect us to help so.
But if I can't have your support, then I can't take them in, in the story. Thank you very much. I respect that. I've got to go back to my facility right now, make sure everything's safe. But I have much respect and you're all doing a great job. And also there's many houses, as I was the first at Las Cruces, Don Anna, for the section cut program. I started it by proving that it could be done. We have a lot of facilities around here that could be retrofitted. It's cheaper to retrofit than it is to build new. Have a blessed day. God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Good evening, Governor Grisham and Mayor Payne. I'm the probate judge over Tera County here. And so I see a lot and I get a lot of calls and I deal with various types of debt and all that. And so what's happening now is that I do see a lot more younger, you know, I've always been involved with the juveniles and that, but they're even younger than that. And that's where my heart cry is out, that if we're able to reach them even the more, then it will stop and it will make our community, our nations even greater because of leaders. So I switched from Manhattan to my elder at our church, the Joy Center. And so I was drafted in here into Alamo Gordo in seventy-one. And so I did, I did graduate from Alamo Gordo High School in seventy-three. And so even as I go up there and I see the various things, and some of us women have even gone on, on some of the Wednesday mornings and pray, just interceding for our kids and for all the schools, really. But the one thing that I wanted to bring out was that we probably are the ones, Mayor Payne, sending you all those calls that you're getting because they do call my office where they're crying out, "Some, we don't even do probates on those young ones." And it's like, yeah, how are they getting the guns? And it's the parents. And then with all of the dispensariesaries on every corner of our, in our community, we have a lot of them. And so that's involved. You have so many entities involved in order for us to fix this whole solution, as you've been saying earlier. It takes all of us and everyone that's up there, it's, it's all working for our good. Even with the parts that slipping through, there's parts that where I slipped through, but we're able to come back and we're able to come to these town hall events to blurt out, to hear, to listen. That's one thing in the probate, I have to listen so that I can know how can I better help and point you to the right entity or the right place to get what you're needing so that our Tera County community is good. So what my key thing is, I've been hearing that there's supposed to be prayer coming back into the schools, whatever. I want you to know I'm here. If that opens the door, because prayer was important in seventy-three when I was in the high school. And I know that there's a lot of seventy-three classmates of mine in this community that are in good, good positions and doing good and great, great models. And so I just want to know if there's anything out there that is true about the prayer coming back into the schools. I want to help ours here. I, I want to help our young people.
I can direct you about that. And again, you'll get from me exactly where I am because that's... I, I have concerns about that. The president-elect, I think, has said publicly that he's working on supporting more of that effort using telephones and potentially making it a requirement. I don't know that he will win on that or not. I won't get to decide that or not. My body, those members of Congress or O delegation, you and I may not be on the same page. But I think that's where you're seeing that there might be some movement in the area that you agree with, you and everybody. And I don't know exactly where we'll see more of that or not. I am expecting that you will get less federal money for education. I am expecting that we will get far less money for special education. I'm worried about that. The financial into New Mexico will be well over a billion dollars. And I want more evidence based in teaching in schools. I'm already having to talk about making them do science and reading and the songs and back and all those things. But that's where there is an actual movement and there's a president-elect that I think is really on that same page. We have an obligation to have every American get access to the information that they desire and a productive process to weigh in. Also, talking to your congressional delegation because that would be an aspect of many of those things. And we have an honor to make sure you're committed in every meaningful way possible. That is my job. And I would do that kind of act, even if I may not agree with that sentiment. You should expect me to do right by your initiative.
Thank you.
But the stakes aren't doing that. I'm not requiring that. I'm not likely to sign anything that would work that way. I'm just looking to know that.
Oh, yes.
Okay. And you have every right to disagree with me. Does everybody feel like they can disagree with me and I don't get mad at you? Because that's, I'm not doing a very good job if I do that. And then I will always connect with people who support your ideas and your ideals are our people. And you should have every unfederal effort to do the things that you care about, whether we're not equal and that's not, or angry or illegal or racist or any of that. And so always expect that unreservedly.
It's just where...
We see that, it's not a very good job.
Yes.
And I have seen there is a, there is a federal effort at that law. You are correct.
Oh, great. So I just want to just emphasize again that, you know, death is no respecter of no one, no race, no how much poor you are, how rich you are, whatever. And that like what you're saying earlier, it is, violence is increasing everywhere. And people love to point to say, "This person or department didn't do it," or whatever. But if we don't come together on all of this and see eye to eye, it's going to overtake all of us. And so I just thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you very much for being here and for your patience. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dana Jones. I'm the district defender in the twelfth judicial district, which means I'm head of the public defender department in Alamo Gordo and Rui Doso. So I, similar to Jeanette when she very first started, I wear two hats here. One is obviously as the head public defender. The other one is as a mom and community member. So thank you, everybody, for being here. I'm really happy to see our neighbors here. It means a lot to me because I look at public safety respectfully, a little different, Governor, I'm sure as you understand. But that being said, I really appreciate the way that you're digesting the feedback respectfully and not defensively of perspectives that may not be the same as yours. And I wanted to share, it's been bothering me for about four hours now as I've been sitting here and it's just on my heart to address it, some of the very original comments that were made when this started about competency, which hasn't really come up, so maybe it's not as much of a passion for the community as it is for me, but those are a lot of my clients, right? Those are people I work with, they're people I care about, I care about their families. A lot of people in this room, everybody hates a defense attorney until you need one, right? Until somebody that you love needs one. And then it's, "Well, my family member is different because of X, Y, Z." And I believe it's not my job to judge people. We have really good judges in this district. We have an excellent district attorney and we should have an excellent public defender. And then the system plays through, whatever happens, if all works right, is what was meant to be. That's the way it should work hypothetically. I worry that a lot of our laws and a lot of the policies in New Mexico are centered around Albuquerque, respectfully. And we're in a rural area that has a very different population, different needs and different resources. I will tell you, I see every single case that gets filed in this district. I either assign an attorney, like the fine man next to me here to the case, or I assign it to a conflict counsel. I know everything that happens here on a very surface level. It is not true, it is factually inaccurate, that people have thirty or forty violent felonies and they're getting their cases dismissed. That does not happen. You don't have to take my word for it. You can get the information from the court.
You need to hear.
Here, yes. I cannot speak to Albuquerque by any means.
It's not just Albuquerque. Albuquerque, San Jose, Las Cruces, Tars, Espinaldo, Los Angeles, Daytona. And so I do agree with you.
That's okay.
That you just said, I don't know if I read it. Is, I do worry that in so much restrictions, they just don't seem to be able to see those nuances and to use the expression the way that's meaningful. We're thinking about ways to successfully partner between the DA and PD. I might take a closer look here and then I would be like, about why it's a successful interpretation here and not in its world and so many other things.
Thank you, Governor. I'm sorry, I have that effect on people. So I can totally understand. But it's just important that my community understands the reality of here. I cannot speak to Albuquerque. I don't know anything about Albuquerque. I've only practiced in a rural area. My job before here was on the Mescler Apache Reservation. I was the first public defender on the Mescler Apache Reservation. I started their public defender department. All I know is rural work, right? But here, that is not happening. And dangerous people who have competency raised on them, if they are found incompetent, I just want you guys to know what happens. It's a forensic evaluator who actually determines that they're competent. It's not the district attorney or the public defender. They have an evaluation that gets brought to the court. We can challenge it. We can get another forensic evaluator, either side, if we think they got it wrong. But the court isn't just making these decisions based off of emotion. It's based off of professional psychologists' opinion. Then after that, if they are not dangerous, their case could be dismissed. If they are dangerous, which dangerous under the law has a definition. It's not just emotion. It's somebody that is a serious threat of inflicting great bodily harm on another person. That's what that means. There is not one murder case, not one, I promise you, look it up, do not take my word for it, in Alamo Gordo in the last seven years where someone has been charged with murder and had a case dismissed. It's important because I don't want you guys to have false information. What we do with this is different, right? I will always defend people accused of crimes. That's what I do. And the DA will always prosecute them. That's what they do. But we have to have accurate information to know what's happening in our communities. I just want you to know that that's the truth. Murderers are not getting their cases dismissed off of competency in Alamo Gordo. Maybe they are in Albuquerque. I don't know. It's not happening here. And I just think it's really important that everyone have that information. We have a competency diversion program that we just started here a couple of months ago and I'm really excited about it. What it is, and I'm so sorry you're holding this for me, but it's people who have misdemeanors that would normally be dismissed. They actually, and they have to agree, so we can't force them into it because they still have constitutional rights and those matter. But these people can go into this program and one of the women that was sitting in front of me, but she left, she's actually a provider in the program. And they have these two... these two forensic navigators that will walk them through six months of their case, which would have been dismissed previously, they make sure they take their meds, they see if they need a social security card, if they need a driver's license, they help them get stable, which is what people in our community need, we do not have resources here, we need help, we're all connected, and we can all sit up here and demonize each other, point fingers at each other, or we can help each other, realize that like my success is like to hers, to yours, to his, to everybody around us, we are intricately connected, and just saying you did this awful thing and I'm gonna throw you away is not how we grow healthier. I understand there are very rare cases that might need to happen, but it's rare, it is not the majority of what happens in our communities. Thank you, Governor, thank you, Mayor, and everybody else up there, I know you guys hear me all the time, so thank you.
I think it really is really hard, the idea is really hard, problem is, is you know, I can't read to all eyes these concepts. When I have forty felonies that are in those categories, or murder, sexual assault, in many jurisdictions, every single year since twenty sixteen, something's wrong with you, and every other state has addressed it, except us, so whatever you're doing right here, thank you, because it means that our team here is keeping this community safer, that's exactly what it means, and for that, Governor, it's great, I'll meet you, like, if not me to, well, I have to have churches, DAs, and PDs, mayors, and commissioners, all jurisdictions doing this in a productive area, I, I, I am really worried about the lack of being able to get people who can say yes to true, can't overdo it, and I, it has to be nuanced and right-sized, and I'm all absolutely, I need experts like you on the other side, who do your constitutional job, and thank you, because you don't get rich in that, it's our fault. Um, help us make sure that those balances are debated and addressed individually, but I, it's not possible, me as the, I, I've been an advocate my whole life, and I'll answer that side of the equation my whole life, um, and it's not working here, and we are literally the last state in America to say, you gotta, you gotta do something about these issues, maybe more clarity for jurisdictions that can't, figure out how you are doing that, and definitely with the experts that do the competency analysis, and I don't know why this is not working anywhere, that's a little bit of exaggeration, but most of the other traditional districts, I don't know, in some places like Santa Fe County, they don't prosecute a single misdemeanor, which means there are hundreds by the same person, misdemeanor person, and there is theft, and shots with blow tanks, and over three million, and then you know what happens when someone gets in there, justice, people get hurt, so it is really a growing issue, I, I could use your help in making sure I understand what works here productively, so I make sure that that gets debated by us too, and accepted as that, and I really appreciate it handled that way, um, and I should, I may be clearer, I will do some of that, I want more data, that's very good, that's not for me, I'm doing some more of these town halls, we can do that better, uh, but the data that, that I can use is true, I'd love for you to see it statewide, because maybe I'm missing something, uh, in that review, but I have to tell you, now the administrative office of the courts are gonna debate two million lines of COVID, so they don't look at it, I'll tell you what happens, they don't look at it, they don't use it, we don't share the same data sets in a meaningful way, we can't tell what's working in one community, what's at risk in another, and crime is escalating statewide the way that it should, when crime is coming down anywhere else, and I'm really trying to get my arms balanced, but we're fair, constitutionally sound, productive, innovative, doing interventions on the front end, but creating more accountability, and someone said, "We got a problem with cannabis," and, you know, I'm responsible, I advocate for and ran on it, of legalizing cannabis, and you know, good leaders, I don't mind doing more of that, not less of that, demonstrating role model of good leadership, I'm imperfect because I'm human, we're doing some course correction on cannabis, I don't think it has enough enforcement opportunities, it has not diminished the black market at all, and I have a growing concerns about cannabis giving left to individuals who are clearly not supposed to have it, and it was never intended to be the only rural economic driver in New Mexico, so for folks here who are concerned about that, I am too, and we're introducing legislation to course correct, uh, our efforts, you may not agree, you may agree, I'm just, I just put that to be broad about how people's opinions are, but you should know I'm introducing legislation to course correct cannabis in the state of Arizona.
Hello, uh, thank you, my name's Matt Crisillas, I'm a retired, uh, law enforcement and a veteran, um, I want to bring up two things, uh, one that came up earlier in the discussion, but my original question is, um, what, there, the city council, uh, last year passed an ordinance to, and I disagree with this personally, to criminalize homelessness in our community, uh, whether doing that is providing citations for, um, people panhandling, or, you know, individuals, uh, that's American, they're slowing down, they're filing to, uh, provide money or handout to those individuals. Um, what was brought up in the meetings, it's all public record, uh, somebody brought up, I think it was one of the commissioners, you know, what about the fire department that goes out and does, uh, prior, you know, fundraising, you know, do things, and stuff like that, um, city commissioner and mayor.
Still got some water over there? I'm dying.
That's a snack soon, this one.
For sure, I appreciate you, man.
Yeah, you know, that's not the word, they're only enforcing against those individuals with this badge, that reeks of targeting certain individuals, um, instead of doing it across the board, so my question is, what can we do as citizens, if we go to meetings, we ask these questions, and we try to fix it in the ballot box, what can we do, to go to state agencies or other agencies to ensure that the laws and ordinances at the local level are being, um, enforced equitably at least, and follow the letter of the law?
Think of that, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I'll, I'll wait if you want, or I've got another thing on the, um, the weapons and, uh, red flag laws as well, uh, something, a personal experience that I think is a logistical problem, to why that's probably not being enforced.
Oh, that would be helpful, so I'll make sure that, thank you, I mean, we want to know why it's not working, if it's something that we've missed, um, I, I have very specific opinions about, uh, panhandling, uh, and there were now more supreme important decisions that allow more aggressive behaviors that you may not agree with, uh, by global entities, and I've been supportive of those, and the reason I say that too, is I want you to know where I am, because I don't want you to be disappointed or feel like I wasn't transparent. Part of that is, we have the highest pedestrian, um, death record per capita in the country, I have growing suspicions, I'm gonna be really clear, suspicions, I'm working on creating a body of evidence here, that a lot of, uh, panhandling, which is free speech...